Meeting of the Lower Allen Township Board of Commissioners of April 22, 2024 to order. Proof of publication is available for this meeting for your review. We begin our meetings with a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. We'll pray. We pray this day to give thanks for all the many blessings bestowed upon our township, watch over us who are entrusted with the administration of this township, creating us the earnest desire to serve faithfully and permit us to experience the joys of noble service completed for our residents. Encourage cooperation from those who are served and from those who serve. Help us to use every willing service and every effort put forth for good government. Heavenly Father, we ask your guidance to help us as commissioners to make the right decisions, and we ask that you aid our staff as they perform the daily tasks of running our township, and we request that you be by our first responders as they protect our residents and see that they return home safe at the end of each day. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening again, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to those joining us in person and those that are joining us via the live stream on YouTube. Commissioners, it's always good to see everybody and our staff and our solicitors joining us this evening as well. Our first order of business will be the approval of the April 8, 2024 regular meeting minutes. Now would be the time to make corrections or any adjustments or any comments, and then I'd be seeking a motion to approve the minutes from the April 8 meeting.
No corrections, Mr. President. I make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from April 8, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Brown. I got my second from Vice President Karen. Is there any questions on approving, questions or comments on approving the minutes? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? This motion carries five to zero. Next on our agenda is audience participation. This is where we have anyone who's joined us this evening to participate on any of our agenda items. You would request so now, and then when we get to that item, we'd have you come up to the podium. Is there anyone joining us this evening to participate on any of our agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on to, we have a resolution this evening regarding former Director Grove, former Finance Director Grove after his 22 years of service. And I'd be seeking Commissioners to accept that motion to adopt Resolution 2024 R-15, recognizing, commending, and honoring Richard A. Grove on his retirement after 22 years of service to Lower Allen Township.
So moved.
I have a motion from Vice President Karen, and I have a second from Commissioner Nagy. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? This motion carries five to zero. And at this time, Commissioners, I'm going to present and read the resolution with Mr. Grove, and I'd like to invite the Township Manager, Mr. Bruno, to join me down front. And Mr. Grove, would you join us in the front, please?
Thanks for joining us. It's the same level. How's your couple months of vacation?
It's different.
I would first just like to begin by remembering that Mr. Grove, up until just about two weeks ago, was our Finance Director here in Lower Allen Township, and this resolution should spell out much of his detailed career here. This is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Lower Allen Township, Cumberland County, Pennsylvania, recognizing, commending, and honoring Richard A. Grove, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Lower Allen Township desires to express its recognition and gratitude for 22 years of service provided by Richard A. Grove. And whereas, I'll just say Rick from this point forward, whereas Rick first joined Lower Allen Township on July 15, 1985, as the Assistant Township Manager, and whereas Rick served on the Township History Book Committee, which resulted in the 1993 publication of Lower Allen Township: A History, and whereas Rick resigned his position on March 4, 1995, to move to a different state, but returned to the township on April 2, 2012, to serve as Finance Director for the next 12 years. And whereas Rick has served as the Township Treasurer since February 23, 2015. And whereas Rick has been active in his professional association, serving as President, Vice President, Treasurer of the Government Finance Officers Association of Pennsylvania and its local chapter. And whereas Rick has served as a member of the Lower Allen Township Recreation and Parks Board since January 7, 2008. And whereas Rick has served the employees of Lower Allen Township as a member of various committees, including the Pension Committee, Safety Committee, and Employee Recognition Committee. And whereas Rick has obtained a Certificate of Achievement in Financial Reporting in every year of his tenure since 1988. And whereas Rick led the effort to purchase the township's first in-house computer system. And whereas Rick, financial management of the township has maintained a stable fund balance and attained a standard and poor bond rating of AA+. Now hereby resolve that sincere gratitude and appreciation being are hereby extended to Rick, Richard A. Grove, for his 22 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Lower Allen Township, Cumberland County, and that this recognition be spread upon the minutes and records of Lower Allen Township perpetuity in this adoption. On this day, Rick, and we are so grateful that you've served here in the township. And what I'd like to also let the public know this evening is that Rick is also a longstanding resident of Lower Allen Township. He lives in the Allendale neighborhood. And we're so pleased that you've served as a resident here and chose your career here, and we're grateful for the financial condition that you've left the township in after your career has ended here. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been a great honor.
And at this time, Township Manager, who's served with Rick for all of it, has a clock for you.
Yes, Rick, in commemoration, we hope that you fondly remember your time here at Lower Allen Township by placing this in your home where country allows it. But yeah, it's been, it's been a long time. Most, most of you probably don't know this, but Rick was, Rick and the manager at the time hired me in 1988 to be, to work in the Accounting Department, the Finance Department. And so I feel like, you know, he left for a while, and he came back, and I had the opportunity to bring him back to the township to work with him again. And I think it's, it's been a very good partnership. I'm gonna miss you there.
I'm gonna miss you too. This is real. Well, thank you very much. Like I said, it's been a great honor.
Thanks. Thanks.
Again, Rick, thank you so much for your time you spent here at Lower Allen Township and all the very, very early mornings that you've come in to do the work here. Yes, your wife's laughing right now, she knows. And also, the opportunity that we've gotten to be friends through Lower Allen Township and our community service together here. And I just remember times other than finance when we were at gardener's gatherings and, and things of that nature. Appreciate your service to the residents on the Parks and Rec Board and your leadership here in, in Lower Allen. Thank you. Moving on our agenda this evening to our consent agenda. Any Commissioner, staff member, or anyone in attendance who would like to have an item on the consent agenda removed for further discussion can request so now. Is there a request? Oh, yes, we are, and I skipped right over it. I saw the word presentation twice, and I just skipped right over it. So we did, and number six would have been our presentation to Director Grove for his retirement. And number seven was another presentation this evening, Lower Allen Township Stormwater Program. And we'll go ahead and go right into that. Thank you.
Yep, I'll introduce Barbara. Our environmental coordinator, she'll be presenting to the Commissioners tonight on our MS4 program and updating you on where we are in our permit process. Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you, Commissioners. Pull up my presentation. All the Commissioners have a copy of that in front of them, so. So our municipal separate storm sewer system update for 2024. In 2023, Public Works Director Davis gave your update, so I thank her for allowing me to do this this, this year. So what is MS4? It is the, the system of pipes and channels and swales and ditches and, and all things that lead to capture our storm water and convey that storm water into the Commonwealth waters. It is separate from a sanitary system, so there's no treatment of that storm water. So whatever ends up in that water is going to end up in the waters of the Commonwealth. So in just a little diagram of what all that can entail, it could be yard runoff or anything from your roofs or your gutters or what comes from the street and into those inlets. So Lower Allen Township has 111 storm manholes. We have replaced some of those in the last year. I believe, I won't give you a number, I was gonna say 67, but I think that, I don't know that that is absolutely certain. There are 85 outfalls and 634 inlets in the township. That previous picture that was up there, that was one of the newest inlets that was installed in Highland, in the Highland area. And we had a report within, within a week of some education that needed to be done there. So the background of our MS4 program here at Lower Allen Township is that our original permit was, was given to us in 2003. The one that we're currently working on is from 2018, started in 2018. They are a five-year permit, and our intent is to reduce pollutants that enter the waters of the Commonwealth here in Lower Allen Township. We have Cedar Run, we have the Yellow Breaches that eventually leads to the Susquehanna River. So they are both enforced through EPA and through DEP. And how does that work? We have, we have our five-year permit period. Some of you may question why we're in 2024 and still in our 2018 permit year. Last year it was extended to 2024. We just received word that it was extended to 2025 and possibly till 2026. So we are still under that same permit at this point in time. Annually, we have to report to DEP on what we're doing, our MCMs. We have six of those, and I'll go through a little bit of those. Anything that's improved or changed and how we're managing those. And then we have to reevaluate every year. So our, our permit for 2018 was infected in March of 2018. We report annually, reports are due September 30. They, last year's report for 2023, the 2023 annual report that we uploaded was 2,346 pages in length. So, and again, we have a possible extension to 2026. There are six minimum control measures. We have public outreach and education, public involvement and participation, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction site storm water runoff controls, post-construction storm water management, and pollution prevention and good housekeeping. So, MCM 1 is, our requirements are to develop and distribute educational materials, consistently update lists of targets and audience groups. For example, our audience group this year for 20, in 2024, have been people that have holes in their backyards. We educate the public on water quality impacts due to storm water runoff. Last week I was at the library for ages 6 to 10 for a storm water and pollution reduction workshop for kids. So, so like I said, we distributed the information. We present to colleges, to Messiah College, for their economic sustainability class. We've, we are doing a program this summer with West Shore Rec. The library has asked us to return. And last year we also presented at, the last few years, we've presented at multiple different organizations. MCM 2 is our public involvement and participation. So we are required to provide public notice, which comes from the notice of our laxa meetings, any storm water fees. We provide public information on that, any MS4 changes that we have to uphold with the state. We support volunteer programs like Yellow Breaches Watershed Association. We work in conjunction with them to do a cleanup every year. And we have also separate cleanups. We did a cleanup in January this year out here at Cedar Run, and we're in the creek cleaning up. MCM number three is our illicit discharge, and we're required to enact a model ordinance for changes permitted to discharges of the MS4 and develop storm water system map of infrastructure. We are working on that and have, we do have one of those in place, and then have continually updated it. We create a reporting mechanism for residents to report non-storm water discharges. And then we're educating the community on problems related to dumping in storm sewers. MCM 4 is construction site storm water runoff. Our permit requirements are to coordinate with the County Conservation District on construction inspection protocols for sites larger than one acre. Anything smaller than one acre, we regulate here. And what have we done? We've entered into agreements. We, we create a reporting mechanism for all our staff when they visit the construction site. We work in cooperation with the Community and Economic Development Office or Department for that. And then we developed educational brochures for our construction industry. MCM number five is post-construction storm water management. So we have requirements in our permit that says that we are to ensure proper operation and maintenance of post-construction storm water controls. So what have we done? We have an annual inspection program for BMPs in the township, both public and private. We have moved those inspection forms from a paper copy to all of the property owners to an online. So residents can go out with their iPad or with their phone, do it right there on site, take their pictures, upload it, and it's done. We've had great success, I think, this year with that. Last year, we kind of rolled it out with a paper copy in their inspection letter. This year, we did it, did not provide them with a paper copy unless requested. And I believe more than half of our, our property owners took advantage of that online option for them. And we had more success in getting those back in a timely fashion. So we educate our residents and business owners on proper maintenance and inspections of their BMPs. If we have a new property owner that moves in and doesn't understand their BMP or what they have, we do walk them through what they have and, and let them know, you know, this is what you are expected, and it's all outlined in their letter that they receive. And then we can tie those BMP inspections into credit reductions to our property owners. And those credits would come off of their storm water fees. So MCM number six is pretty much what we're doing right now. We're training our municipal employees. We've gone through education this, this spring of administrative employees. Later on this month, I'll do, the storm water department will do a training with Public Works. We're gonna do that on-site with them. And then all employees here at the MSC building had an online training as well. Last year, we divided it into different groups. So every group had their own training. This year, we kind of pulled it all together and made some online training for everyone together. We develop O&amp;M procedures for all municipal facilities, so our operation and maintenance of those facilities. And then we have a tracking mechanism for street sweeping, for inlet cleaning on ArcGIS. So we have a pollution reduction plan that is part of our permit. And you can see that we are required to make, mandated a removal of 10% sediment nitrogen and phosphorus from our storm water runoff here in Lower Allen Township. So it's a reduction of 317,000 pounds of sediment per year. We had to figure out how we were going to do that, and a part of that was the bioretention facilities locations. We had 10 of those outlined. There are four that are owned by the township. The rest of them are owned privately. So we have entered into agreements with, with all of those private property owners so that we can retrofit, and then also operation and, O&amp;M agreements, operation and maintenance in perpetuity for those. So here's a map all over the township of where all of them are located. So we have them spread out for both watersheds that are in the township. So this one that you're seeing here is our Public Works facility. We did a retrofit a few years ago. It's working very well. We have Sheaford Crossing, which is the one that you'll see along Lisburn Road. It's, it's the cardinal flower that's blooming there in that basin retrofit. And then we have Moreland. Beacon Hill was just finished in 2022, so it is still, you'll see it's, there's still, if you're ever over there, that you can still see that there's still some plants that need to come up and things like that. This is the end when they were doing the planting, the plugs there. But it was finished, one of the last ones to be finished. And then this is the Sheaford Crossing East. So between Sheaford Crossing East Basin and the other Sheaford Basin, that covers all of the drainage for that entire development. So all of the storm water runoff goes to one of those two basins. In 2024, we bid three projects, Bethany Village, BJ's, and the Wise United Methodist Home for Children. You should see construction starting in those soon. And they will, they are set to be finished by August 2 of this year. And then we have pollution control measures. We had some appendices to our, our permit. So B is on pathogens, and then pollution control measures that we have. We are, we did a, as you're aware, we had the water sampling project a few years ago. And there's a story map on our website for that. And then what are our next steps? We have the five additional PRP projects. Three of those that we're doing in 2025. Two we anticipate to do in, or I'm sorry, three of those scheduled for 2024. Two of them are anticipated for 2025. We hope to get to them in 2025. We have some things to work out with those as far as some utilities that are in those and things. GIS program updates. We have a permit requirement that we have to report this year for our pollution control measures that we have to add to our permit. And then we prepare for the next, the next permit cycle. And then this is just a few pictures of an additional project that we did in storm water to reduce storm water runoff in Cedar Run Park, and then also Yellow Breaches Creek this past fall.
Thank you. Great presentation. Commissioners, I'll just open the floor up for comments or questions at your will. I have one question to start then, while the others are maybe coming up with their questions. Regarding the permits out into the future, okay? So I, we knew, I guess it was just over two years ago, that they were probably looking at extending into '25 the '23 permit, or '24. And this kind of put it out, it seems like '26 now. So when will our residents really feel the effect of, and this is a specific question because the time of year is coming, of washing their car at home? And, and I understand, I think, some of the parameters around that, but I'd really like to know what we would anticipate to tell residents who are asking us now about washing their car at home.
So, car washing and also the pool discharge was added to our permit as, as a monitoring device in 2022, I believe? Fall of 2022? So they are allowed to wash their car, they're not allowed to use soap? So.
So the model ordinance that DEP required us to enact required us to change our permitted discharges to not allow vehicle, residential vehicle wash water with surfactants in it. So they can wash their car without soap. They can wash their car without soap as long as it doesn't drain to the MS4.
Right. So, and so when residents call in, and I have other questions that are not so specific to this, so this isn't like a pet thing for me, but I get, people ask. And so regarding the washing without soap, I mean, that's obvious. You would just wash, give your car a rinse-wash.
Right.
But if they wash it with soap and they are on a grassy area.
That is fine.
They're perfectly fine, as long as the overrun's not running into, let's say, a street, into a storm water drain directly.
Into our MS4 system.
So what happens if somebody's washing it on an impervious surface, but then that runoff goes elsewhere onto their property?
But does it reach the MS4?
Yes. They're still fine, as long, they can still wash it on an impervious surface.
Yes. And our ordinance works off of an educational basis. We're not fining, we're going to educate and explain to them what's happening prior to going out.
So we added it purely as a guidance measure right now?
The modeled ordinance from DEP required us to amend those languages.
Yeah, and I remember that, but people have started asking.
Absolutely.
And I know that you'll be getting the questions. So thank you for that answer. Commissioners?
I just had a quick question. I thought the presentation was fabulous, so thank you very much. Just in terms of the developing the storm sewer system map of infrastructure and the GIS, can you just remind me, who is doing the mapping? Is it, are we, as the township, actually doing, we don't have a third-party company that's doing that?
So we are doing the mapping here. We, it's through ArcGIS, so it is an, it's an online cloud-based system. So we do have the ability to make adjustments there as we do infrastructure upgrades, as we see that a pipe has changed or the direction of it, or maybe we took out a turn in it to make it a straighter line. We do have the ability to make all of those adjustments here in-house.
Okay, thank you.
And the Sheaford Basin, where the cardinal flowers are growing, right? Now, are there specific flowers and things like that that have to be, that they guide us into or whatever through the permit? And if so, do we then add, could we then add annual things to those to color things up differently?
So we use, we use a mix of native plants for all of our basins. There is a list of recommended usage for plants on DEP's website. We, we chose to use plants that absorb a lot of water. They like a wet bottom to them depending on the area. It also depends on what is there. Is there a clay liner there? Or what do we have to do to that basin as to what plants we're gonna put in? But yeah, we try to, try to do something that's native, and depending on where it's located, pretty. So it's aesthetically pleasing to the residents, so they just don't see plants. They can enjoy whatever it's bringing as well.
Okay. So we try to get as much color in there as possible for these plate spaces. And that leads me to my next question, and I think I've just resolved it myself because I think I see what's going on. The Sheaford Crossing East Basin, just so there was no confusion if a resident says, well, why is that empty? That's all fresh.
Yes.
I see the dots now where everything's been planted.
Yeah, so if you would go, that was an old picture. It was from when we first completed it. We were out there, I believe, last week, and, and we didn't get pictures of it, but there are new plants coming up. So you, it looks completely different now. It's growing in nicely.
Residents often make the comment to me about how they like to see either, you know, grass. Like, people don't like to see just brown retention ponds and things like that anymore. So I think that this is, this is good, that what we're doing. Commissioners, any further questions or?
Commissioners, any further questions or comments on this?
I'd just say thank you for the presentation. I think for probably the last seven years, many people have heard me absolutely rail against this MS4 program. I think it is probably one of the dumbest unfunded mandates that the federal government ever came up with, and then what the state government did to it, I think, was completely ridiculous. However, it's not our choice, right? And what I would like to say is, is that I think that you two have done a wonderful job with the implementation of it and the fees that we're collecting from the program. You're doing, you're doing meaningful things that are having a very positive impact to the township and the residents that live here, so I'm very thankful that you are, you two are running with this and doing such amazing things with the program, so thank you very much.
Yeah, and I would echo that, but also Commissioner Brown, much of that seven years, because he's been a commissioner now for a year and a half, was pretty much in my ear. And he's laughing.
Many other boards across central Pennsylvania.
As well.
And as well as, as well as testifying in front of different areas of government and explaining why it makes zero sense. But again, we have to do it, so as long as the residents understand this is something we have to do, and the program has brought a lot of good changes to the township, so thank you guys for doing that.
Yeah, thank you. This was a great presentation this evening, and Commissioners, I would just say, and also to any residents, if you have any further questions, feel free to call our folks in here, they're happy to answer them. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Moving on to our consent agenda, any Commissioner staff member or anyone in attendance who would like to have an item on the consent agenda removed for further discussion, can request so now? Is there a request to have a item from the consent agenda removed for further discussion? Hearing none, I'd be seeking, or looking for a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda this evening.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Brown, I have a second from Commissioner Schwartz. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Next this evening under the President, be looking to accept the motion to adopt Resolution 2024-R17, a resolution of the Township of Lower Allen, Cumberland County, Pennsylvania, approving the disposition of certain permanent or long-term official records that will instead be maintained in electronic format in accordance with the policy standards and guidelines approved by the Local Government Records Committee.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Nagy, I have a second from Commissioner Brown. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Next, Commissioners, I'd be seeking a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-R18 to enter into a grant agreement with the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for Creekwood Park access to the Yellow Breaches Creek.
So moved.
I have a motion from Vice President Karen. Commissioners, if there's any discussion on this, feel free to second with a discussion.
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Nagy, is there a discussion? Or questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Next, I'd be seeking a motion to, seeking to accept a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-R19, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Lower Allen Township appointing Patrick Dzinski as an emergency medical technician, public safety officer in the Emergency Medical Services Department effective May 6, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Nagy, and I have a second from Commissioner Brown. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Thank you, Commissioners. At this point, any business pertinent to Lower Allen Township can be brought up. If you're here to bring up any business pertinent to Lower Allen, you can come to the podium, we allow about 10 minutes for that discussion. Is there anyone joining us that would like to bring up any business pertinent to Lower Allen Township? Seeing none, we'll move on to Public Works, our Public Works Director, Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one item on the agenda this evening for discussion and possible action. It's a professional service agreement with YSM Landscape Architects for the design testing and construction documents for Phase One of the Beacon Hill Radar Site Park. As you recall, we received grant funding for this project, this has been budgeted, it is in our '24 budget, and in accordance with our grant agreement with DCNR, we have four years of eligibility to start this project. So Manager Vernau and myself reviewed the documents received from YSM, so this is for development of design and construction for Phase One of the site. I'll entertain any questions you have. They are working with our township engineer to perform the stormwater functions for the project, that would be wetland investigation, stormwater testing and plans, ENS controls, and NPDES permits, and then they will be bidding in and grant checklist for us.
Commissioners, I'll just open the floor up.
Director Davis?
Yes.
Very briefly, have we worked with YSM previously?
We have. Manager Vernau may be able to speak to our relationship with them on past proj, no.
I don't remember any specific projects.
Not, not YSM, maybe, okay. I thought that they had done other.
They may have, but I don't recall which specific project.
They did the initial design.
They did our, they did our phase plan, our phase concept plan, but I thought they had done another project for the township. I'm sorry, I can't recall which.
That's fine.
Commissioner Schwartz, but.
No problem.
Yeah.
I was curious whether you recall if the time and expense term in this agreement was also included in that agreement. I just noticed it seems like it's, in addition to the amount, the total, the total cost, so I was just curious if that is consistent with our prior interactions with them and what our experience has been.
Yeah, yeah, I can't speak to that because I didn't work with them on past projects, but that is a common practice to do time and expense. We also discussed that with them because we may be able to offer some construction observation on township staff, with our staff as well, so we left that in there as optional for inspection as well, and observation.
They don't have to drive all the way up to.
That's right.
Watch other people work.
That's right.
That sounds good. And under the section, standard contract terms, I'm sorry, I'm making you read a contract, but I was curious at whether, about the, and I'm sorry for not bringing these questions prior to the meeting, if I, if my work schedule had allowed that, I would have the mutual indemnification and waiver of subrogation terms, is that typical in contracts?
Yes, yes, Mr. Minor.
And I'll speak to, also, I think that Director Davis has made some of these things better, because you see the insertion she's made.
I agree.
And in fact, the only thing that I commented with her before the meeting, they always try to limit their liability also, so, you know, there is a provision that I kind of like, is they're saying, you know, if you don't like the limits of liability in this one three times that has cost a contract, you can't agree to pay the additional insurance, and it's something that, you know, that may be a consideration, I just don't know what the potential losses are, and I don't want people to, you know, pair with good insurance program the township already has, but I, you know, Ms. Davis and I have talked about that before.
Yeah.
I really, I think, you know, the other thing that we've dealt with as far as the standard terms, the meeting, you know, I think the meeting is more mutual and certainly personal interest.
Yeah, that was my impression, that it looked as though, because of the red line that y'all had caught that and had made the appropriate changes, I just wanted to check in to see what y'all thought about that, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Oh, Mr. President, Becky, could you just remind me what the timing is then for all of this, I guess this component, and then what the contemplated next phase is?
Yeah, Phase One, we have a four-year contract for our grant agreement with DCNR, so we were hoping to start Phase One, grant agreement was January 1, hoping to get the design, all the work uploaded and bid, I would hope later this year for construction in '25.
Oh, okay.
And then work on potential another grant application for Phase Two of the project to DCNR.
So we're targeting spring for actual construct, spring of next year.
That would be our hope.
Okay, just so I can tell my neighbors, who may be curious. Thank you.
No problem.
Commissioners, any other questions? So the director is looking for action on this tonight as a possibility, if anyone would be so inclined to make a motion, if we want to get this moving.
Make a motion, Mr. President, enter into professional services agreement with YSM Landscape Architects for design testing, construction documents, Phase One of the Beacon Hill Radar Site.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Nagy, my second came from Commissioner Brown. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Next, moving on to our township manager, Mr. Vernau.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item I have on the agenda is discussion of possible action. The Eagle Scout is doing a project for the Lisburn Community Fire Company down at the station, and they have asked that the permit fees be waived for this project. This would be typically what we would do for municipal facilities, plus it's an Eagle Scout project, so.
Make a motion, Mr. President, to waive building permit fees for the Lisburn Community Fire Company Eagle Scout Project.
Second, with a brief question.
I have a motion from Commissioner Nagy, and I have a second from Commissioner Schwartz.
I don't know who to bear this to, but I was curious, it sounds, it's a 300-square-foot building, so I'm imagining there's probably not much that would be involved in terms of inspections anyway. Is there, is that the case? I'm imagining that there's probably not much that we would be waiving here anyway.
Very minimal inspection.
Okay. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And your second, hold?
Yes.
Okay. So I have a motion from Commissioner Nagy, a second from Commissioner Schwartz. Is there any more discussion, questions or comments? I'll call for the question, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next item I have on here is some information for the board. Currently, there's a results of a survey being passed down. I think we were talking about smoking in, or not smoking in township parks, and you would ask what some of our other neighbors were doing, so this is just a short survey of surrounding municipalities and some other municipalities on the east shore that are roughly our size or larger. The green, obviously, is, these would be people who have non-smoking policies or ordinances in their parks, the red, do not. Also included in your packet, a toolkit from Young Lungs at Play, which is an organization whose mission is to remove tobacco use from places where children play. So there's the building blocks of what you want to do, a policy and ordinance, both, so opening it up for discussion.
I personally feel great for ordinance for this, we're not trailblazing based on the survey, or almost all except one or two have no smoking policy. Ironically enough, walking in tonight, there was one gentleman out in the park smoking, I could smell it, and another set of family at the swings over there, so I'm sure they can smell it and get the smoke too. I don't know, for me, I just think this is a, can't go wrong.
Commissioners?
I agree wholeheartedly. I think it'd be great if we could maybe see a draft policy and a draft ordinance at an upcoming meeting for us to consider.
And I also thank Manager Vernau for finding this program too, because it works pretty well, and reading through in conjunction to getting us through it, but also providing free signs for the township so that we don't have to, it's an expense saved.
Yeah, I thought that was really great, that that was included there as well, so, yeah.
Yeah, I wholeheartedly agree. This, I think that Young Lungs at Play does a lot of great work. There are, there are contacts through Department of Health and through American Lung Association of Pennsylvania, our regional primary contractor, who can provide additional background on how to develop an ordinance to fit our current code. I can provide that information to you, Tom. This is, this is especially fun because this is my day job, tobacco enforcement, so I'm glad that we finally get to talk about it. And it surprises me that there are actually, actually that New Cumberland doesn't prohibit smoking in their parks already. For whatever reason, Hampton is more spread out, you know, it's a township, but with New Cumberland, there's a lot, you know, space is a lot more at premium, so it just surprised me. But just as you go forward, I would say that the definitions are particularly important in this context, especially around the definition of tobacco product and electronic cigarette or electronic tobacco products, because that can end up tripping people up in several ways. So for what it's worth, I wanted to put that out there, so, thank you.
Commissioners?
As far as the, to Manager Vernau's point, what route we take, is there something more logical, or is there an ordinance that must route to there?
Well, I wanted to ask this, Melissa, if you had an opinion on whether an ordinance, I think it should be an ordinance, an ordinance and a policy is belts and suspenders, and, you know, do we need a policy if we have an ordinance?
I'd be honest with you, I like them both, because if you really are serious about this, you need an enforcement mechanism, and you can only do that by ordinance, and I think rightfully it should go in your parks ordinance, because you have many, you know, no's and don'ts and prohibitions in there, I think you already have, probably have appropriate enforcement section, but I think just because of maybe the comments of Commissioner Schwartz, you know, this is just not something that everybody understands, and if, you know, you want to put something out there that's readable, a policy's a lot more easy to read than an ordinance, and I think that that's, I think your initial approach is probably educational anyway, so I think probably, you know, they do kind of work together, but if ultimately, if, you know, back to where I started, if you intend to enforce it, yes, you certainly need an ordinance and something that district justice can understand and enforce.
I guess I also had a question, since Commissioner Schwartz has cautions against language and things like that, in the toolkit is a sample ordinance. Do you feel that's adequate? Do you want to doctor it up? I should say lawyer it up?
There is, well, it's, it's fillable, so it's, you know, the example in the toolkit is a, is a great starting point. I would, I would, you know, use that as your starting point, and depending upon, you know, the scope of what we want to cover, you know, if we want to make sure that we're encompassing, you know, cannabis products, or, you know, say things like herbal cigarettes, you know, things that might not have tobacco in them but are nonetheless smoked, you know, or, you know, say. smoked, um, you know, or, you know, say, smokeless tobacco products like, like pouches that end up in piles on the ground, uh, throughout the course of a softball game perhaps, um, you know, that, uh, that sort of stuff, um, you know, when you're, when you're going through and, uh, you know, filling out the, the form that's provided, while the language there is extremely useful and reliable, um, because of the complexity of the, of the, uh, of the market and how frequently it changes, um, there can sometimes be unintended, uh, consequences of how you phrase certain things. So, that was really all I was getting at. If, uh, if you want to chat about that more in particular, we can.
Commissioners, any other comments? So, I'll start off by saying, I, I'm not a smoker, haven't been my, for my life, and I don't care for cigarette smoke in public places or in private places. I am a little caught, I, I, I think I'm exercising, my, my mind's exercising a lot of caution here in how we approach it, um, and I'm not sure there will be a solution, but I'll say this ahead of time, I'm going to be in favor of, of some sort of smoking prohibition in, in our parks. I believe that's the absolute right thing, and it's in the best interest of most of our residents, I truly believe that. I think, depending on what the approach is and what kind of products will be covered, I mean, I'm thinking of the person that, I, I saw e-cigarettes in one of these, I'm thinking of the person that has a device that, whatever grabs nicotine from, I'm not sure how those work, but has no smoke, you know, or, or something like that included. And perhaps, uh, they're using that maybe, I don't, I don't know if medication's prescribed through those type of things at all. But what I'm saying is that I'm being, I guess, really cautious, because, you know, we're going to lay potentially, if our intent is to go after people that are smoking, or go after people that are using tobacco products in our parks, are we now going to be laying, um, a lot of burden on our public safety or police department for enforcement, because people are going to ba- basically be, um, you know, calling and saying, hey, we now we have to have officers out here at the busy times during whenever, during ballgames or whatever, and then try to tag people. And so, I, I get a little nervous about that, because I think, you know, what's that going to mean from an enforcement standpoint? I'm pretty, uh, I'm pretty big on things that deter people's behaviors, and I think putting signs up and making our parks publicly non-smoking is probably going to shave off most of the use of, of, uh, products that would irritate other people being around, like smoking products and things like that. So, that, that's all, I just wanted to share that with the commissioners and maybe staff who can hear it tonight, that I think when we, when we go after this, I just want to make sure our intent is to just make it much better than perhaps it is right now, um, at least to begin with, because I'm not so sure we want to try to put something together where the enforcement mechanism is such that now we've got to start, um, expending other resources to chase perhaps the five or 10% that's left off the deterrent side once we pass an ordinance. That's all I would say to that.
Mr. President, I would add, your inclination is correct, but, you know, uh, being heavy-handed with enforcement is typically not effective in reducing incidents of, uh, you know, violating these sorts of policies. It is things like signage and community outreach and, uh, you know, uh, you know, community pressure, you know, uh, friends and neighbors and families saying, hey, you're not allowed to smoke here, and then they put their, put their cigarette away, or they, you know, chew on some gum, or they put a patch on or whatever. So, uh, you know, from a public health perspective, that, that is an accurate inclination. With, uh, with regard to the e-cigarettes, it's a, it's an aerosol that they produce and gets exhaled. So, while it's not smoke, it's still, uh, there are, there are still solids and chemicals that get, get transmitted secondhand to others. It's different, uh, but, you know, it's still something, and, uh, especially if it's, uh, you know, filled with THC or CBD, then you might not know what the heck's in it.
So, if we directed staff this evening, commissioners, to start, uh, the beginnings of some ordinance language or using what we have there in, in that program as a base for it, um, we would probably then come back, you know, in some sub, some meeting, discuss it a little bit, I would assume, and then maybe set a date for, and advertise for a, a hearing, is that what we would do with this type of thing?
No, this is simple legislation, you don't need a hearing, but certainly, I would think you want to have a draft, a review and, and comment on it, and you can do that in, in a normal session, and obviously, it's going to be advertised at some point in time, so you may have public input as well, and, and you decide how broadly, I mean, I might say you can have a hearing, I'm just saying it's not legally required.
Okay, yeah, i- if we don't need to have a hearing, I wouldn't go through that bother, but I would want to make sure that we would give enough, uh, notice on, on the language of whatever ordinance that we would come up with, that if people wanted to make public comment, they could. That's all I would encourage. So, I guess I'll turn to the manager and just ask, are you, uh, looking for some guidance tonight to get you started?
Yes.
So, uh, commissioners, my, my thought is to have the manager come up with a, a, a draft ordinance based on the sample he has from that program, and then we could, uh, review it at a subsequent meeting. Does that work for everybody?
Yep, I would agree. The language and what, what products it covers is pretty detailed for us, whoever we're looking for. To your point on, you know, the question that would come up, I don't, I know we have to have an enforcement portion of this, but, you know, to me, this is more about what we allow or don't allow. Right now, if someone wants to smoke openly in the parks, that is perfectly within their, their right to do so. It's about making it a rule that it is not okay. It's not about chasing people around, you know, trying to catch them with their cigarette, that's not, not the intention. I know enforcement, you know, will come with that once we, we make it, you know, and ban it, but it truly is more to say we don't allow this, not chase after people and try to make example on folks.
I, I think the captain could probably speak to this more, but we, we don't have the resources to actively go after most of our ordinances. I mean, we're getting, we, you know, we, they, they do the best they can, uh, motor vehicles are, you know, a big one, but, uh, uh, if we, if we tried to go out and actively enforce the bulk of our ordinance, um, book of ordinances, it would be, you'd, you'd be hiring five times as many police officers.
And I don't, I harbor no illusions of that, and that's not what I'm looking for out of this, this is true, us saying we don't want this in our books.
Sure, I think we would all agree on that.
Now, if somebody complains, that's a different story, if they want to call in and say, somebody over here, you know, they're having a cigar smoker over here at the, you know, I'm sure it was in somebody over to kick them out, but, uh, you know.
Was that before or after you got invited?
If I had not been invited, I would, I would go with them, you know? Yeah.
So, good, it sounds like we have a path to get us.
Yeah, there's, there's also, um, I mean, you saw the list, there's other municipalities that have ordinances that I can glean from.
Yeah, that was going to be the suggestion, was just to sort of see what's already working locally from them, if they have an ordinance, and I also just want to really say thank you to Commissioner Nagy for getting this conversation started, I think it's very important and it's very valuable to our residents, so thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Okay. Uh, the last thing I have is, uh, we had discussed junior commissioner programs a couple meetings ago. I had sent out the rough guidelines and, uh, uh, we were, I had, I had asked the board for comments back about the program, I, I haven't gotten any, so I'm wondering if, are you still interested in it? Is it, are you interested in the way it was presented? Do you have other suggestions or, you know, any ideas on the number of kids we have? I mean, my, I know some municipalities, they, they don't turn anybody away, so if they get, uh, a, an applicant from each of the high schools in their area, they bring them all in, um, which we've got two high schools in our jurisdiction, so.
The only other thing in reading through this, I, I, I think I would kind of open it up to any of the, any of the students within the townships, there's some kids that are homeschooled, I don't think we should necessarily exclude them from the program. And, you know, I, I do know some families that have kids that go to, you know, different private schools that aren't necessarily Trinity or Cedar Cliff, but I think a vast majority of our applicants would probably come from there, but I, I wouldn't want to just preclude a, a homeschool or, or cyber school, um, student, so I think if we keep the language maybe broader and just say any student that resides within Lower Allen Township, I think...
Yeah.
Here's a functional question, where are you going to put them? Where do you want to seat them? I mean, they can sit in the audience and stand up, and when you call on them, we can put a table in the, in the middle.
I, I think that would be fine, plus my thinking was sort of, just when I was reading about this initially, was, I mean, because we're starting this program here for the first time, maybe we just start off a little slow and just have like one or two to start before we go full throttle and have more than that, but certainly don't want to turn people away, maybe we can just sort of see how many applicants actually we receive and, and go from there, but, um, you know, just since we're getting our feet wet, wet with it, I don't know that we want to have as many as some other municipalities may have. But I think they would be fine to sit, you know, in the first, first row in the audience for now till we, like I said, just sort of give this program a trial run and, and see how it pans out. I, I did know that there was, when we first talked about this, there was some discussion about concerns with their, um, like sovereign immunity and act, I guess if we could just have Steve Minor weigh in about that in terms of our, the program, if there was any concerns about that once we get our guidelines put together.
With governmental immunity, and I, but it, but yeah, I, it would apply just like it would to any, any other person, and, but, I don't know if we raised the concern before, because my only thing legally that I was concerned about was whether the, the young person is just staying in this room, because if, if they leave this room, I think you have to go through that background check process, because, you know, you're sort of responsible for a minor, and that, that was, and again, I just want to get the parameters of what this person would do, because if they're always in a public area, I don't think that's necessary, but if you really would think that, yes, they might be interested in learning about public safety, or they want to learn about the fire service, and they're, they're out of this room, then I think you have to go through that background check so that, that they're around people that, that can, can supervise young people.
Do we want, just kind of in the same vein in the beginning, just say it's purely for here, and then eventually, the, sorry, the paragraph on the back page, eventually maybe work it into that, but it's some sort of job shadowing, but maybe not right now off of that.
I think that that's wise, to approach it slow, and, and it would be only at our public meetings or public hearings.
And that way, the person would enjoy the same sort of qualified immunity that you folks have for their comments, and I don't think they're going to say anything off color or, or, you know, that would be controversial, but I would, would limit them to this, this room and this meeting time.
Just, you know, to, practically though, getting those background checks is not, it's not that big a deal, I mean, I used to do them for football.
Get some idea of the parameters, because you don't want to, you don't want to have the, 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 the young person, you know, going about the building, we don't have it done.
No, no, they, they should actually be escorted, I mean, if they want to come in and learn about something, they should have somebody come in with them.
Right.
Not just drop them off at the front door and say, you know, see you at three or whatever. Besides, you don't know what they're going to hear around here.
When, when would we figure this program would, uh, kickoff?
I would suggest the, uh, um, beginning of the next school year, since we're pretty much getting closer to the end of this one.
Do we want to try to get the stuff out to the schools now, for the tail end of this year, for beginning the program next school year?
Yeah, if the board's ready to, yeah, I'll tweak this a little bit and put something out to you at your next meeting, and, uh, if it's the, if it's outlined the way you like it, it will get the information out to, well, as many schools as I can think of that are, that are people, we'll put it in newsletter so that homeschool people know about it, um, Harrisburg Academy, Christian Academy, Bible Baptist, plus the, uh, the, the big ones, Trinity and Cedar Cliff. Maybe even Redland, do we have residents that attend Redland? I don't think so.
No, there, there's some that attend McDevitt, but I don't, you know, I think the newsletter and all that would cover, cover that.
And it's on the other side of the river.
Yeah, sure.
Great, great program.
Okay.
Is that all you had this evening?
Uh, I think I got a lot of work.
I think you got, you covered the three things that were on there. Uh, we'll move on to commissioner reports, um, this evening, we have an executive session that, uh, we will recess to, Mr. Solicitor, or Chance? Okay, we'll recess to executive session after commissioner reports this evening. No?
Do we, uh...
I'm asking the solicitor.
Why, do we need to come back?
I just thought you were going to schedule something.
I'm sorry?
I thought you were going to schedule a meeting time and place.
Well, I guess that is possible, although I would need to check with the other party before we schedule something, so I wasn't prepared to do that tonight. We do need to schedule a meeting, but I would, was going to talk to the board about that.
Okay, then I, then I, I guess we can adjourn? And the other, the other, that was the first item, the other item, I'm assuming you could, could always adjourn, right?
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, that's, that's info only.
Unless we're counseled otherwise, we will af- adjourn after commissioner reports to executive session. We'll begin this evening with Director Sweeney. Director Hall? Anything further, Mr. Minor?
For me, thanks.
Mr. Sterling?
Nothing to report.
Director Davis?
Nothing, thank you.
Director Knoll?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Greenwall? Mr. Manager?
Pass this down to you, Dean, and do you want to, um, address this at all?
Oh, I see.
If no, that's fine, we'll move it on, then I have nothing.
Yeah, I think, I think this will let go for tonight.
Then I have nothing.
Thank you. And are the captains with us this evening? Nothing? Okay. I would just like to again say, uh, thanks to all of our staff and management for a terrific job, uh, that you've been doing here in the township, it shows, um, when we talk, well, when I talk to residents for sure, um, in that, uh, there's always great comments, whether it's in public safety, public works, or if they come and pay a visit here having to do with something in finance, so, um, really glad to hear, there's always, usually always good comments coming in about our staff, and so grateful for that. I would like to make special note of Director Knoll, um, this, this week, she contacted me to sign the checks that Comit- Vice President Karen and I alternate in signing, and, uh, I would like to thank you again, how, uh, in order and how, you know, nice those checks were presented and easy to understand and read, and, uh, didn't have to take one out of place, so thank you so much, and I had a couple of questions, and the manager answered them this afternoon, and, uh, just like to thank you again for being with us, and, uh, appreciate your hard work you're putting in to get things caught up the way you like it.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have for this evening, we'll be going into executive session to discuss two items, uh, there are two current police association grievances, uh, one is Officer Curtis demotion, and the other is a pay matrix under the current collective bargaining agreement, which we'll also discuss in executive session. I'm so embarrassed.
You don't need to be embarrassed in front of us, Dean.
But, uh, yeah, it's been one of those days.
I mean, it's just us.
So, commissioners, we're going to move on to the commissioner reports. Oh, my dear. Mr. Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you all probably know, tomorrow is the primary election, so if you're inclined, don't forget to vote if you haven't already. If you have a mail-in ballot with you, make sure that you don't put it in the mail right now. Take it to the Cumberland County Bureau of Elections to deliver it. And otherwise, you know, make your vote count. I wanted to thank staff and Solicitor Minor for all their work on the food processing residual issue, seeing the letter from the county and the letter back from Department of Health. Seems like a very complicated issue, but one that, you know, maybe there's some opportunity to engage with our legislators and other public officials to try to find some kind of solution. So anyway, wanted to thank everybody for their work on that regardless. And also wanted to note the, for the municipal leaders breakfast at the library, I am going to that. Megan had registered me when I reached out to her, asking who should register me, the township or the library? She just went ahead and did it. So that's why I didn't reach out to you, so I will be attending.
I assumed you were coming, as a reference, so.
Your assumption was correct, so sorry for not reaching out earlier, but, yeah, so that is all, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Nagy?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Brown.
Nothing tonight.
Vice President Karen?
I don't have anything tonight either, thank you.
All right, I thank you, commissioners, for your patience. My mind was elsewhere a couple, a couple times this evening. We will adjourn to executive session, thank you.